Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Regular Meeting on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Sharon Harvey with the Church of the Nazarene, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Russ Miskari from the Marine Corps League.
Let us pray. Dear Lord God, we thank you for those who are willing to serve our great community, our city council members and our mayor, and we just ask that you will bless each one and what they are doing for us here in Havasu. And we ask that you'll go before us tonight and give us all the wisdom and good judgment for each agenda item, and may your will be done in our city and in our nation. These are important days, and we need you to bring peace to us all. May you honor our efforts to do the right things for our community, and as you help us, we will give you praise. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. Russ, thank you for being here. If you want to share a little bit about your organization with us.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, it's like we've come out of hibernation. We were pretty quiet the last couple of years and all summer long, of course, because of the heat, but we're alive and well. Received a message from Abundant Graves Church today, a lieutenant who was shot at Fort Hood in 2014 is going to be the guest speaker. They're going to talk about his near-death experience. He was shot in the neck and the throat, survived that, and has found faith, and he wants to share his message with anybody who's interested. On Thursday, we will have, of course, our Marine Corps birthday, and this is the 247th birthday of the Marines. We're the second oldest. The Army is the first, the Navy is the third, et cetera. So in honor of the Corps' birthday, indulge me as I do the first verse of the Marine hymn. From the halls of Montezuma to the shores of Tripoli, we will fight our country's battles in the air on land and sea. First to fight for right and freedom and to keep our honor clean, we are proud to claim the title of United States Marines. Thank you. Friday, of course, we have a Veterans Day Parade, which will start up at Maverick and down to Wheeler Park, where there'll be a little ceremony. Our Christmas trees will be arriving on Sunday, November 27th. They'll be unloaded in the morning of Sunday, the 27th. They will go on sale. This is our biggest fundraiser of the year, so we appreciate your support. The sale will start about noon on that Sunday, the 27th. The Havasu Memorial Walkway is something that we're partnering in with the London Bridge Rotary Club. Gary Myers, who is the founder of the Walkway, got this started in 2008 with a dedication to veterans, wounded warriors, in fact, came to town and they had a very nice ceremony. It sort of went into sleep for a while. Gary and I and Tracy Jones from Radio Central got together, and we sort of reinvigorated it. So we've had some excellent years, and you, of course, many of you have participated in the ceremonies under the bridge, and we thank you for the city's cooperation and work on behalf of helping us rejuvenate the Walkway. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Of course. And lastly, we have a recruiting drive going on right now. We accept members from all branches of the forces, even though our name is Marine Corps League. We are not restricting anybody. All branches are welcome. I guess lastly, I'll say that we have a couple of us from our local detachment are now in the state Marine Corps League statewide with 23 detachments. We're officers in that group, and we're taking our message about the patriotism of Lake Havasu City to the other 20-some detachments around the state of Arizona, including encouraging them to join their area chambers of commerce, because it's been so good for us, and we're asking them to get embraced, January members, along with who's the president right now?
Lisa.
Oh, yeah, Lisa. And they were very supportive of us when we got started. They helped us get into social media, and it's a great group, of course. And so, Mayor, that's it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for your service.
Thank you for being here.
All right, we'll now have a roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell. David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan.
I am ready to go.
Mayor Kal Sheehi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five on our agenda is the Call to the Public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Jurisdiction would mean it would be a matter in which that we could vote on to change policy. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that three minutes is up. We ask that you direct your comments directly to the city council, so just face to the council and share your comments with us, and we will be able to listen intently. But because the item is not on the agenda, we will not be able to respond. We do encourage you, if you are here for one of the public hearings, to hold your comments until that section, because at that point, we can have a two-way conversation throughout that process. You do not have to sign up to speak and call the public, but we did have a citizen do so, so we'll start in that order, and then we'll open up to anyone else that would like to address the city council. So we'll start with Amanda McDougal.
Good evening, council. My name is Amanda McDougal, and I am a resident in Lake Havasu. I'm also a retired police officer from the Lake Havasu City Police Department. I am wanting to basically address, we are having a drag queen show February 4th, 2023, at the London Bridge Resort, and my main focus on this event is that children are invited to this event. I want to address a few things that I did send an email to Mayor Sheehy, who did respond, basically in response to my email. And in my email that I had sent, I explained the individual holding this event by the name of Christopher J. Hall had advertisements from other shows with naked, you know, naked men with blankets, dressed as women, and then on the same ad stating that all ages are welcome. In that email, I explained that in this city, we do have ordinances that are in place still to protect and stop this type of event from even occurring, let alone allowing children. Different ARS statutes, for example, ARS 13-3619, permitting life, health, morals of minor to be imperiled by neglect, abuse, or moral associations. That's a Class 1 misdemeanor. Another ARS statute I want to state is 133507, public display of explicit sexual materials. When children are invited to these types of events, that's actually a Class 6 felony. And also to address the city ordinance, which is 926010, all the way through 070 that states it's a Class 1 misdemeanor. Basically, cabarets are not allowed and within city limits. As you know, in the past, there have been topless bars shut down. We're a very family-oriented city. If the city wanted or the residents wanted to stop this event, technically, that city ordinance says it all. But as a citizen, I am concerned for children attending. This is something they do not need to go to. I have a child, and this needs to be stopped before things, more things, open up. I understand, Mayor Sheehy, that you are the vice president of the London Bridge Resort, and I appreciate your call yesterday. And I understand that you stated that the police department had investigated the... Am I out of time?
Yeah, if you could just wrap up your comments.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I understand that you said the police department investigated it and said that they didn't find anything unlawful. What I wanted to bring up is you are actually Chief Doyle's boss. He answers to you, and it would be a conflict to have the police department investigate something within the city of something that you have interest in. So I believe outside sources will come in and look at this if they have to. So I'm just asking to stop not allowing children to this event. I'm asking that.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes. That concludes, citizens, that have signed up for Call to the Public. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Brett Miller. I'm a resident of Lake Havasu City. I just started taking up bicycling, and I noticed the bike lanes are pretty filled with debris. And I saw at the last council meeting, you guys signed a contract to get sweeping done. I was wondering if there was any possibility to get the sweeping done in the bike lanes more often than the four times I think that you guys are allowed in that contract. It would just help me save me from having to patch tires all the time. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Recently, I heard somebody say...
Ms. Toy, could you bring the microphone down as well? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Toy. Recently, I heard someone say there wasn't enough bicycle parking on different streets. I just, I wanted to bring that to your attention, that places for people to, well, lock up their bikes and for their bikes to be safe, and especially since as our transportations are changing, where people are riding more electric bikes around town more often. They're able to ride from their house all the way in the back of Havasu to the front of Havasu, and they really would like to be able to lock up their bikes. And I want to say something about the drag show, but not. So thing is, is that I am not a bigot. I am not against the drag show for adults. I am not against the drag show or anybody who wants to go to the drag show or all of that. But for the last, I don't know how many months you get, oh, since probably since February, since the first drag show, which was this year in February, not last year. It was this year. It's only been a few months. But every time they come up, they, people who talk about it get attacked and have been called names from other people. And maybe there are people who come up and discuss it, who are bigots. I cannot, you know, change your mind about the people who are bigots. That's not my responsibility. But if I am believing that children should not be at a drag show, and I state that, that doesn't make me a bigot. It makes me a concerned citizen who cares about children, period. And really do hope the adults that go to the drag show have a lot of fun and enjoy themselves. But I also really think that children should be protected, and people who wish to protect them shouldn't be scared or feared of feeling like they don't count, because there are people who are bigots, who do get up and say stuff that is kind of mean. And that's the same thing with, you know, the rest of politics that you have no control over, where if I agree with somebody who happens to be something that the rest of society really dislikes, then I get made fun of for that. I'm okay with that, too. However, that doesn't make me them.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? All right, I'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public. Councilmembers are able to respond to any criticism made during Call to the Public. So just for the record, the chief of police works for the city manager. So there's three positions that work for the mayor and city council. That's the city manager, city attorney, and the city magistrate. All department heads report to the city manager. Moving on to item six on the consent agenda, would any of the councilmembers like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, and we have a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. There are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, three alternate members, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member. The deadline to submit applications for these vacancies was last Friday, November 4th, by 5:00 PM. However, anyone interested can still submit an application that we will keep on file for up to one year in the event that another vacancy becomes available. Applications are available on the city's website and also available at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is our City Managers' Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Lots been happening in the last couple weeks since our last council meeting. Lots of things to celebrate and folks to honor. Mayor Sheehy and Councilmember Lynn, you kicked off the Fourth Annual Young Adult Development Association of Havasu Walk Away from Drugs event by proclaiming the day to help promote awareness, reduce stigma, and support prevention efforts for persons using drugs and alcohol. All members of council, you have participated in the London Bridge Parade, along with members of the Havasu Youth Advisory Council, and by all accounts, the parade and that day's festivities were a great success. Mayor, you met and welcomed the new Mojave Community College Director of Soccer Programs and Men's Team Head Coach, Camilo Valencia, and later in the week, you had the pleasure of hosting Girl Scout Troop Number 7473 and their troop leaders, Jenny Lauter and Vajet Sari, in the council chambers, helping them earn their Civic Engagement Badge. Mayor, you then proclaimed November 5th as dementia connection of Havasu's Eighth Annual Moving for Memory Walk Day at London Bridge Beach to bring attention and awareness to Alzheimer's disease, and how important it is not only to exercise your brain, but your body as well. Mayor, you proclaimed November 8th and 9th as Kids on the Colorado River Days. Kids on the Colorado River is a new nonprofit learning program designed to use local educators and river agency resources to educate Lake Havasu City 7th grade students on boating and safety, wildlife in the lake, river ecology, and waterway history and culture. And finally, at the last coffee with the mayor, and this time with the mayor and our two chiefs, the American Red Cross presented a lifesaving award to one of our lifeguards, Bailey McElwain, and you presented her with a key to the city for her heroism as well. Just a few months ago, Bailey was having lunch with coworkers at Tavern 95 Restaurant, when she noticed a man and a woman that were asking for help. And at the same time, another restaurant guest started screaming, and Bailey jumped up, immediately responded, and asked the man if he needed any help. But of course, the man, he couldn't speak, he couldn't cough, he couldn't breathe. He was only able to shake his head and indicated that he needed help. Bailey performed abdominal thrust and back blows and dislodged the object before paramedics even arrived at the scene. Thanks to Bailey for her swift actions, and because of her, that man is alive and well and able to go home with his wife that day. Great job, Bailey. We are very, very proud of you. It is almost December, believe it or not, so save the date for the upcoming annual community dinner. That'll be at the Community Center in the Relics and Rods Hall, and that'll be on December 9th. As always, there'll be two seatings with one at 4:00 PM and one at 6:00 PM. There'll be more details coming soon, but for now, put that date on your And finally, city offices are closed this Friday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Our police and fire department services are always unaffected. However, admin offices and the Aquatic Center will be closed, and will obviously resume all normal schedules on Monday, November 14th. Trash and recycling schedules are not interrupted. And on this day, members of council are joined by the Havasu Youth Advisory Council members during the Veterans Day Parade, and that'll begin at 10:00 AM. And we encourage everyone to attend the parade and honor our local veterans. This event is sponsored by our local Veterans of Foreign War Post 9401. Of course, McCulloch Boulevard will be closed, and the parade will start on Akoma, and we'll head down to Wheeler Park, where it ends with a ceremony. In honor of our veterans this week, we are joining with Operation Green Light. It was a recommendation coming from Councilmember David Lane, and we're supporting that initiative that is designed to shine a light on the service of our veterans and their families. And because of that, the whole week, the London Bridge will be, will be lit up green in honor of our veterans in Lake Havasu City. With that, Mayor and council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. Item 8.1 is Introduce Ordinance Number 22-1297, declaring the document entitled "2022 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 5.20 Vacation Rentals, November 22nd, 2022, a public record and amending Chapter 5.20 by adopting by reference multiple text amendments to revise definitions, require animal impairment, include notification requirements, include additional requirements of a vacation rental, and revise violations." Mr. Kozlowski.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just give me a few minutes in order to pull up the presentation, and then we can go ahead and get started. rental ordinance. Before getting started, if the changes to our ordinance, I would like to look back on some of the legislative history on short-term rentals. In 2016, Senate Bill 1350 preempted local authority and prevented the cities from utilizing any process that was in place. Some authority was returned in 2019 with House Bill 2672. This allowed cities and towns the ability to collect contact information from our short-term rental owners. And most recently, Senate Bill 1168, which we'll get into in a moment. The city worked very closely with the league and a number of other communities in order to get some tools returned to local communities, in order to get some local control back. The recent changes at the state level have provided the following tools to assist in addressing some of the concerns with short-term rentals. Permit application, which we can now utilize, compliance with city codes and laws, emergency point of contact, as well as neighbor notification and a city license number must be displayed on all advertisement for short-term rentals. The following are prohibited uses per state statute. Housing sex offenders utilizing short-term rentals as sober living homes, selling liquor or illegal drugs out of a short-term rental, obscenity, and utilizing a short-term rental for special events and retail activity. The state is very clear as what the city can require as part of the application process. Name, address, phone number, and email of owner and emergency contact, address of short-term rentals, CPT number, and agreement that they will comply with all laws, and most recently, be able to require a fee for that permit application up to $250. Failure to provide a complete application and/or a fee or provide a fee is grounds for denial, suspended license for that property, false information, owner or designee is convicted sex offender or felony conviction are also grounds for denial as well. A short-term rental can be suspended for a period of 12 months if they have three verified violations or one of the following: felony offense, physical injury or death, sexual offender, or a non-residential use. In an effort to make sure short-term rentals comply with these changes, penalties for first, second, and third offenses are now included. Additional monthly penalties can be enforced for failure to apply for a permit and failure to provide contact information. These minimal, but hopefully useful, tools will help to address some of the concerns associated with short-term rentals. The effective date for these changes is scheduled for March 1st, 2023, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kozlowski. Yes, this is a long time coming to get a really small amount of additional tools in our toolbox. Certainly not what we were looking for completely, but it is a step, a small step in the right direction to help manage these. Lake Havasu City, as Mr. Kozlowski went over, has kind of a storied past with vacation rentals and short-term rentals, but we were successfully able to manage them for many years. They have always been part of our market mix since Mr. McCulloch first founded our city. So it never was the intent to get rid of short-term rentals, but how do you find a way to manage them within our neighborhoods? And we were successful and found that. In 2014, we had an ordinance that was, allowed us to have neighbor notification, allowed us to manage them, where short-term rental owners were able to use their property for that purpose, and then neighborhoods were still able to be managed, where we didn't have traffic and noise and trash and some of the complaints we were getting of those days. Then in 2016, state law changed, and the very first sentence in the law says, cities and towns are preempted from doing anything to regulate these short-term rentals, and it's been a fight every legislative session to be able to get some of that local control back. So this year, the start of the legislative session in January, we decided a different approach. We worked with our local delegation, Senator Borelli and Representative Biassucci, to run a bill that would take into account our interests that are unique to Lake Havasu City, and Representative Biassucci agreed to run a bill. He ran the bill. His bill was not the successful one, but some of the components of his bill got in to allow us to have these few tools that Mr. Kozlowski went over this evening. We still would like some more, but we found that there was lots of opposition throughout the state, which was a challenge, and we'll continue to advocate for more once we see what the results are of these types of issues to address it based on the council's discussion this evening. So again, I don't want people to walk away thinking that we've solved the short-term rental problem, because this isn't going to solve the short-term rental problem, but it definitely will give us a few additional tools to be able to help manage that. With that being said, do any of my colleagues on council have questions for Mr. Kozlowski or comments? Councilmember Lynn?
I have a question. Under Section D, where it's, where they'll be denied, can you tell me, it says under five, the owner or owner's designee is a registered sex offender or has been convicted of felony... Are we doing a background check on every application?
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, I do believe we are doing a background check, part of the permit application process.
So they have to get background checks?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Are we going to be setting up, this is probably from Mr. Knutson, are we going to be setting up a special number for residents to be able to call if they're having a problem, or they want to make sure that the short-term rental in their neighborhood? Or do they just call code enforcement? What would be the best avenue for people that are violating, or neighbors think people are violating, this ordinance?
Mayor, Councilmember Lane, thank you for the question. We'll have some numbers that are set up. If you go to the city's webpage right now, I don't have it immediately in front of me right now, there'll be a number that's available off the website that a resident can contact, our customer service division, and notify them if there is a short-term rental operating within the neighborhood that maybe not, it's not registered, or, you know, operating illegally, if you will, in that regard. So we'll have a hotline that will be set up for that, for that. Of course, if there's issues...
that we need continue to thrive, and those that are causing problems to go away. Thank you.
And as Mr. Knutson had mentioned, it was September twenty-seventh that it even was our ability to even put an ordinance into place. So ninety days after the close of the legislative session is when the bills or the new laws go into effect without emergency clause. So you moved very quickly, and we appreciate that. There's also a notice that's going to be required to be posted in each short-term rental home, similar to what you see in hotel rooms that talk about rates and emergency procedures and those types of things. There's also, based on the ordinance that we have in front of us for discussion this evening, includes some life safety measures, so smoke detector alarms, fire extinguishers are going to be required, and then this placard notification, and it identifies some of the challenges that are being created by these short-term rentals, the illegal fireworks that Mr. Knutson mentioned. That's one of the biggest complaints that we get from neighborhoods throughout our community, letting them know that it's prohibited, and it also will have the emergency twenty-four hour contact number there. So should the short-term rental user need that? Or, of course, the neighborhood contact, because we'll be able to notify the residents that are adjacent to these short-term rentals, so front, back, right, left. So that will put some tools in everyone's box to be able to address it immediately, because obviously, we know that these guests are short-term. I mean, they might only be there for one night, they might be there for three nights, but they certainly aren't there for long-term that are impacting our citizens on an everyday basis.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
So with all these new regulations and asks that we put on the vacation rental owners, and they go through the application process, is there any kind of follow-up? And this is actually for Jess. Is there any kind of follow-up? Like, how do we know that they have fire extinguishers? Are they going to be inspected by the fire department now? You know what I mean? Like all businesses are? Or are they just going to be like, well, we told you the rules, we hope it's that way?
Mayor, Councilmember Moses, yeah, there's a lot involved, and there's some cities, you know, across the state, as we, as ordinances change, are putting in teams in place. Scottsdale has a five to ten staff that are doing that when people check in, they're going and doing the inspections and so forth. We, through the application process, we are requiring them to basically to attest that they have everything in place, and they're following all the rules and procedures that are there. If they don't, and if they're identified as providing false information, that permit is immediately suspended and voided. If a police responds to a short-term rental, and they enter the premise, and they notice any of these things are out of place, that's going to be, that's going to be reason to suspend your short-term rental license with the city, and at that point, you'll be operating a short-term rental illegally. So we're asking everybody to abide by the rules that are in place, to make sure that the tenants are safe, and that they are respectful through the neighborhood. That's really what it comes down to.
No, and thank you. I think that just kind of indicates just, this is a burden not only to our citizens, but to our staff, to, we are now the front desk for the world's largest hotel, and so the amount of resources that we're having to commit to make sure that these people are operating, a well-run hotel is a lot on the city. So that two hundred and fifty dollars, I don't think is enough, but I know that's the limit of what the state says we can do, because they apparently think they know best.
I'd add too, we're the front desk for the world's largest hotel in terms of short-term rentals, with both arms tied behind our back. There are a lot of restrictions put into place. You'll see that any justification that the city has to deny an application for a permit, you see them there, there isn't much, there's not much of a takeaway there. Any reason that the city can suspend a short-term rental permit, the state statute tells us exactly what they are, and we can't do otherwise, as the statute reads.
Thank you.
Councilmember Berlin?
I just have one quick question. How do the neighbors know that they're registered? Do they have to go and look it up? Like, what if my neighbor has a short-term rental? How will I know that they're registered?
Mayor, Councilmember Berlin, as part of the permit application process, they are required to notify the neighbors behind diagonally and adjacent to them, as well as within three hundred feet. So that is included in that permitting process.
So, and Mayor?
Yeah.
It would, as a resident, I think it would be nice to be able to go somewhere on the website and see a list of addresses, or, I mean, in a beautiful world, we could see, I hate to akin it to this, but like a sex offender, you know what I mean, you see all the dots on the map kind of deal, but to be able to know, hey, there's not a dot on the map next to my house kind of deal, why haven't I been notified? To make it easy for them to call code enforcement and say, hey, I got a short-term rental here that is not playing by the rules. So these are things maybe we can look into going forward.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we'll take what the state has given us here, and then we'll see how it applies, and see if there's any tweaks or adjustments that we have to make to how the code is, plays out, and what that looks like.
Great idea.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Mr. Mayor, I just also want to just thank Representative Biasucci and Cobb and Senator Barelli for doing this. Like I said, in two thousand sixteen, the reason we had this, it started all this, Havasu had it pretty well under control, is basically the lobbyist came into Arizona and wanted to take total control away from the cities, which is what they did, and then there was no control. I'm a Republican, I believe in local government, local support, you know, local control, and unfortunately, our, the legislature, Republican legislature, has not followed through on that. So I really do thank our representatives that are standing true, that are trying to bring this control back to the cities, so we can at least have some control. The problems we're still having is it's the lobbyist, it's the vacation rental lobbyists that are trying really hard, this is about all we can get out of it, because they spend a lot of time and money to make sure that they get exactly what they want, and it is very frustrating. So I just want to thank them for taking the lead on that and working with those in the other cities, too, that also have a big problem, because not all of Arizona has the vacation rental issues that Havasu and some other major tourist locations do. So this is why we need the local control, so each city can handle it differently. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional comments or questions before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. We did have two citizens sign up, so we'll start with those citizens, and then we will open it up to others. So Joseph Demalling? Yeah. Good evening and welcome. Could you just make your way to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Joseph Demalling, and I'm a, my wife and I are residents of this wonderful city for the last twelve years. I'm also a business owner here. We live very close to Airbnb, and I don't know if you recall, but I was here two years ago with serious complaints about that Airbnb setting off fireworks in everyone's neighborhood, in everyone's driveway in the immediate neighborhood. We called the owner. I tracked down the owner of that, out-of-state owner, California lady, who bought it only as an Airbnb investment. She no longer takes my calls, but there's still issues going on. I don't like to always involve our police department, because I believe they're undermanned, and I would like to just talk to her directly to get it corrected. But every weekend, she rents the place out. It's a five-bedroom, five-bath, and there must be twenty, thirty young people that come there every weekend, and they sit out there on the pool, and all night long, three or four o'clock in the morning, they're playing, they're stereo. You can't go up to the door anymore and say anything, because they're stoned out, they're smoking, and they're drinking, and you say anything, and the fight's on. So I have two proposals. First proposal is Airbnb should be registered with a sign or plaque in their front yard with a permit number and a phone number that somebody can be contacted twenty-four hours a day as a property management. One of my businesses here in the city is a real estate business, you probably all know my face. Anyway, and the second one is people that live next to an Airbnb should have a property tax reduction. And that's a fact. You might think it's funny, but it's not. I have people that come in and want to buy into this city, and they want to know where that Airbnb is. Are they across the street? Are they next door? Because they're not looking to move into that neighborhood anymore. Older folks that live in my neighborhood are moving out, they're moving back home. Wonderful neighborhood I have, except for that Airbnb. We can't stand for it anymore. And I hate to call the city police department, but we're going to have to start taking more action. Anyway, I thank you kindly for listening to my complaints.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, so when it comes to the placard, that was actually in Representative Biasucci's bill. That was the bill we were running.
God bless that Marine.
Yeah, it didn't make it through the sausage-making of how legislation comes together. So we were, we were trying to push for that, where it would be some placard that could go on the property with a phone number. It doesn't, state law doesn't allow us to do that. Likewise, with property taxes. But there is discussion through a variety of different avenues on what that might look like going forward. So we're not done yet. This is just one step, like I said earlier, a small step forward.
So if there's nobody to call, because the owner's not accepting the phone calls at two or three o'clock in the morning, and you call our police department, they're going to have to have two or three squad cars, two or three officers show up, just to go up to that front door, so they're not, you know?
Yeah, once this code goes into effect, if that's the will of the council through this process, it will go into effect on March first. This now gives some additional violations. It would be in violation that a twenty-four-hour contact did not take your phone call and address your concerns. And so they would be in violation of this code section, and they would have penalties based on whatever the violation was.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
I just want to comment to that, too. You mentioned you're in real estate. I would work with the local real estate association as well, because lobbying-wise at the state level, the Association of Realtors are, the reason we can't get signs is because they don't want signs, they don't want people to go up and see a sign in front of that house, and so the Association of Realtors is also kind of backing certain changes in it.
We see that the lobbyists, some of the lobbyists are out-of-state, money's coming in.
Yeah.
Correct. But if you talk to most of the realtors here in this city, they do support that signage.
That might be good at the local level to get them.
You have to call somebody, you know?
Definitely.
And you don't want to always put the job on our local police department. You really don't. I do believe they're undermanned. Thank you kindly.
Hey, Councilmember Berlin? Do you have?
Yes, thank you. I just want to address his comment about not calling the police department. If you talk to Chief Doyle, he will tell you all the time, call us, that's why we're here. The other thing that that does is it creates a record, so that when we are going to the legislature, and we're working with Representative Biasucci and Senator Barelli, they can show the other legislators, look, here's the hundred and fifty-two complaints that we have had, instead of saying, well, you know, nobody ever calls the police, so we don't really have any complaints. So it adds a record to what it is that we're saying. So don't be afraid to call the police department, that's what they're there for. Even if they can take care of it over the phone and not respond, it creates that record of a complaint, and we need those records when we're fighting the legislature down in Phoenix. So don't be afraid.
Very good morning, Mr. Lane. Thank you kindly. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you. And then the next speaker is Krista Demalling?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Krista Demalling. I just wanted to thank everybody who's been thinking about this issue, because as my husband stated, we did have a situation we brought forward to the council a couple of years ago, and it has improved, but we took matters into our own hands and got fifty neighbors to sign a piece of paper saying, and we notified the neighbor, or the owner, that, you know, if this continues, we're going to file class action lawsuit, and it did significantly go down. So for two years, I've been thinking, how can we all win? How can everybody benefit? And one thing I was thinking of is prevention. And as you realize, you know, when you go driving down the highway and you see a thousand dollars, you know, fine for littering, and you'll notice that's the cleaner area of the highway, or you notice those speed devices where they says, you know, speed limit's thirty-five, and then you're driving thirty-six, and you immediately slow down. I think that if the Airbnbs were, I don't know if it required, but suggested that they post a sign, thousand dollars fine if the police are called for a fireworks, legitimate fireworks complaint, a thousand dollar fine if the police are called for a noise, whatever, another thousand dollar fine that goes to the owner or the property management. It's a preventative thing, because most people I notice when you're in situations, you know, we all like to have fun, and some things get, you know, we get partying or whatever, you remember that sign. Someone's going to say, don't, because it's a thousand dollar fine. So I would suggest using communication and words, I heard on the radio that you were talking, discussing this this morning, they're talking about respect your neighbors. Well, the problem is, these nineteen-year-olds that come in with, you know, all their parties, they don't know what that means. Most people don't, they cannot give you the definition of respect. We mimic it, we try to be nice, right? But if we were to use courtesy, or maybe consideration, and give examples, this is a residential neighborhood, there are children sleeping, people work in the morning, be alert, be aware, or whatever the term, I think people need to be given an example, a reminder for prevention. Then all the problem-solving, I think, would be a little easier to work with, because most people, you just remind them, but if there's no consequence, and a thousand dollars, believe me, if you look at all the fines that are in place, and the deterrent that provides. So I just wanted to offer, if that's of any help to anybody, and thank you for all your work with the, what you've done. So I hope that helps somewhat. So I thank you for your time and your continued effort with this.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I think that that placard that we talked about, that will go right to the front of the door. It has all that information on there, what the fine structures are, what the code section is, and it just flat-out says, you know, parking, trash, littering, operating or maintaining sober living home, any obscenities that might be there, including fireworks. So I think we'll see, and if we don't see a result, we're not done. So we can, I'll guarantee you this, we're not done, we're going to fight the legislature for more.
I guarantee you, if you go into a hotel room and they say a thousand dollar fine for something.
Yes.
It's not going to be used.
Exactly.
Just a suggestion.
Agreed, yes, let's keep the open dialogue as this goes into effect, and so we know what we are lobbying for at the legislature. The one thing that we don't have a lack of is people that are impacted by short-term rentals, they call us, so we know.
Right. What's a financial problem? Break it down. If it wasn't money involved, it wouldn't be an issue. So I think it needs a financial solution.
Agreed, yeah.
And people understand money that talks. They don't care about, you know, anything else, but you hit them where the wallet, they're going to care.
Yeah, very true. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Yeah. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
All right. My name's Don Rhodes. I operate a small business in this town, and some of you probably heard from talking to some of the short-term rentals. About a year and a half ago, they recruited me, because my business is, I check vacation homes. Small business, just me. Well, I was approached by a few of these STR owners, and they have a Facebook site, and they have been very strong, what's the word, trying to offset some of this issue that's going on in the city. You've all talked to them, I know you have. So what they've done is, I probably got about a hundred contracts now, I don't charge them a fee, other than if I respond to the house. They've referred to me as their guest removal specialist. It was going to be eviction specialist, but they thought that was a little harsh. So they are trying to develop some sort of way of informing their guests that I have a person in place that will come remove you from the house, because Chief Doyle, I'm thirty-five years law enforcement, I know that the police can only go so far, and then it becomes a civil issue. Removing citizens from an STR is not in the police purview. Am I correct? So that's where I come in. I can't respond to a call for service from a citizen, because I contract with these people, and when they call me, they start paying me hourly to
About a year and a half ago, they recruited me because my business is, I check vacation homes. Small business, just me. Well, I was approached by a few of these STR owners. And they have a Facebook site and they have been very strong, what's the word? Trying to offset some of this issue that's going on in the city. You've all talked to them. I know you have. So, what they've done is, I probably got about 100 contracts now. I don't charge them a fee other than if I respond to the house. They've referred to me as their guest removal specialist. It was going to be eviction specialist, but they thought that was a little harsh. So, they are trying to develop some sort of way of informing their guests that I have a person in place that will come remove you from the house. Because Chief Doyle, I'm 35 years law enforcement. I know that the police can only go so far, and then it becomes a civil issue. Removing citizens from an STR is not in the police purview. Am I correct? So, that's where I come in. I can't respond to a call for service from a citizen because I contract with these people. And when they call me, they start paying me hourly to do what I need to do to curtail the issue. But usually, if I show up at the door, it's an eviction. So, I want to be involved with all this so I make sure that I stay legitimized. One question I do have is if I have 100 STR owners, and now with this new thing, I'm probably going to have more, are you going to need a background check from me for each one of those? I mean, that's something to look at. I mean, I don't mind going and get a background check. Like I said, my career is in law enforcement, so.
You know, we like the power of efficiency. So, if we see your name on multiple applications, we've already done a background check.
And posting my phone number on the door, although it might wake me up in the middle of the night, if I can't get a hold of the owner, I can't respond either. Because they're the ones that actually have to make the decision, "Okay, we're going to remove the guests."
Sure. Yeah, so when it comes to, if you're the emergency contact, if that's what you're suggesting, and you call the owner and they don't respond to you, then the owner would be penalized based on the code section that they're violating.
And there will be times where I will have to utilize, I've had conversations with the lieutenant at the police department, and there'll be times where I'm going to need the police there to preserve the peace because that's what they're there for. I don't have a group of guys that are going to show up and strong-arm these people out of the house. So, you know, if they, in the year, last year and a half, I've had one eviction. And it was a daytime thing, and the owner took it upon herself because they weren't following the rules, covered her cameras, et cetera, et cetera, to evict. Did you have a question for me?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses, did you have a comment?
So, are you going to be the licensee? I mean, so your name's going to be on the license, or?
No.
I mean, I would think the owner would be on the license, and you'll just be the contact information.
Correct.
So, the owners are going to go through the background checks, okay? That's why I wanted to clarify. I mean, that's my, that's my understanding.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate what you do. May I?
Yeah, please.
I appreciate the services he provides. I guarantee you, it's not his homes that are the issue. You know what I mean? It's the, it's the homes that don't care. The homes that don't have anybody in place. I did, it did kind of bring up, but oh, let's finish the call.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, would anyone else like to address, yeah. State your name for the record.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm Taylor Harrison. Although I think this is a great move forward. I think we definitely need to control it, and you guys are all on the right track for this. So, thank you for one for that. My question isn't directed towards you all, though. It's directed toward Mr. Kozlowski. You referenced that for this, the owner of that short-term rental has to inform the houses basically in direct proximity to them. My question is, if there's like a vendetta between neighbors or the person in the short-term rental, is that going to, if one neighbor says, "Hey, no, I don't approve", is that going to preclude them from getting their license?
In those instances, no. As part of the permitting process, they're just required to notify the neighbors adjacent to the property. If there is an issue with a neighbor and a violation is called and the police are called out, it would only be a fine if it is a verified violation.
I'm speaking of like prior to that. You said that's part of the, you know, the licensing process. So, if somebody says they don't like the idea of there being a short-term rental next to their house, does that mean it's a no? Like, they can't do it?
No, not in those instances.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during this item? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council discussion. Mr. Knutson, did you have a comment?
Mayor, thank you. Yeah, in terms of the conversation about the emergency point of contact, the code that council is considering this evening and then final adoption at the next meeting, there's very specific criteria of what an emergency contact is responsible for. So, it would encourage you to take a look at that and have some conversations with each of the owners. You are required, if you are the 24-hour contact, to respond, whether it's 4:30 in the morning or 4:30 in the afternoon. And you have either 30 minutes to respond to some of these phone calls and make contact with the tenants. If the PD or the city contacts, you have 45 minutes to respond to those calls and make appropriate contact with the tenants there too. The concept here is that if there is noise, and we heard the description of partying in the pool at all hours of the day, and Councilmember Moses indicated that, you know, we're the front desk. In essence, we pass along that responsibility to the emergency point of contact. Our residents in that neighborhood don't want to wait till the next day for that issue to get, to be addressed. That issue has to be addressed at 4:30 in the morning, if that's when the fireworks are going off or if that's when the noise is taking place. So, I can share some language with you, but as far as that, the responsibility for emergency contact, it's very, very clear in terms of responsiveness. And there are fines to the owner if those, if the response isn't made and contact isn't directly made to the tenants at that time.
Yeah, please, Mr. Rhodes, if you can come to the microphone. Yes.
So, with that, obviously, I'm going to have to redress my contracts. Because like I said, you know, they got a promise to pay me to respond. But is there a way I can get that documentation this evening? Or in that PowerPoint that you presented, is there a way I can get that so I stay educated on what's going on?
Yeah, all that's on our city website. So, you, it's on there right now. So, you can go to this item, but Mr. Knutson can also provide it to you. If you go to our website, the PowerPoint's on there.
Okay.
What we have in front of us is there. Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses.
Yeah, so I had a kind of a follow-up question that Jess was alluding to. So, there are, you know, requirements on, they have to respond by 30, 45 minutes. Response, when does that clock start and by whose contact? Is it by the resident? So, if the resident's contact the contact person, is that when the clock starts? Or is it when the city makes contact with the contact person?
In this case, it would be as soon as the resident makes contact with the emergency contact, that's when the clock begins.
Okay.
So, the city's not really involved on the emergency contact component. So.
So, it's going to be up to that resident to bring that violation to light for the city?
Generally, if it's not going to be resolved, it'll be resolved with a call to our police department, which will be able to mitigate that situation at that point.
Okay.
Yeah. And a lot of that is going to be versus a stopwatch, more of the spirit of.
Spirit of the law. I get it.
Of how that's going to happen. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to go back to this again, but can I just have clarification? Because when that same area where it says owner or owner's designee, so that background check, is it the owner or is it the owner's designee? And would this gentleman be considered the owner's designee? Is that what he would be considered?
Yes. Yeah, city attorney.
Yeah, so he would be, I don't know for sure, but based on the information that he's provided, the owner would be the person who would sign the application, and he would list that person as the point of contact or the emergency contact person.
Okay.
Is how it's defined in the code. The owner or owner's designee would be like maybe the owner, and they have a designee that isn't up at the owner's status. But that would not be the same. It doesn't have to be the same person as the emergency contact person.
Okay. I'm just trying, I just, I'm trying to see who the background check is going to be on.
Yes. So, the background check will be on the owner or whoever signs the application as the owner or the designee of the owner as the agent. So, those will be whoever submits the application and signs it.
Okay. Do we, do, will we keep track of what that looks like? Because what if the owner decides not to use his services anymore, and he was the one that the background check was done on?
So, they're required to update us, but it is also an annual process. So, we know that there will probably be times where people will change something and not get back to us like they're supposed to, but it's an annual process. So, we're hoping that even though people may fail to do so, we'll catch them every year and be able to update the information yearly.
Yeah. And owner's designee would be, say, my parents owned a short-term rental. I happen to live in Lake Havasu. I would be the designee. I then might hire a company such as Mr. Rhodes, and he, so I would have the background check done on me. And then Mr. Rhodes would provide the services that whatever I might contract him for. To kind of understand what the difference between an owner and the designee is the same, same thing. Yeah. Any other questions, thoughts, or a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Doyle?
Love to make a motion.
Please.
Oh, shoot, this is a long one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you make your motion, can we ask that in the motion, you just include the effective date of March 1st? That, I'm sorry, I didn't specifically include that in your suggested motion.
Okay.
But that information, whatever date you choose, which staff would like you to choose that date, that I'll specifically have that in the ordinance for adoption.
Perfect. It's not that long. It was on the right page now. So, we're ready to go. All righty. I move to introduce ordinance number 22-1297, declaring the document entitled 2022 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 5.20, Vacation Rentals, November 22nd, 2022, a public record, and amending Chapter 5.2 by reference with effective date of March 1st, 2022. 23.
I'll still second.
So, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Doyle and a second from Councilmember Moses. When it comes to the timing, I also support that timing. That's kind of the start of the Havasu season, if you will. And it gives short-term rental owners the opportunity to familiarize themselves with these code changes, as well as it gives staff the time and resources to be able to process all of the paperwork. So, not as part of this discussion, but we also process all the business licenses at January 1st, December 31st, January 1st. So, just from a workflow process, we won't be able to do that much sooner. So. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Kozlowski. All right, moving on to item 8.2 is discuss and provide direction on the process for updating the city schedule of fees and service charges as contained in the Lake Havasu City Code, Section 3.20.040. Good evening, Ms. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To start with, just a review of what staff does every year. Our code says that we will prepare for you annually, and you will review annually the fees and charges of the city. There were several years there where we, staff would come to the city or to the council, and CPI was running like at 2% to 2.5%. That would be on the high side. The impact to the fees was very minimal, and it was almost more of a nuisance for somebody to change a, you know, $32 fee to a $33 fee and process that. So, we thought, the mayor had suggested and council gave direction to only bring back actual changes every other year. So, we would track the CPI increases, or we would look at the fees in review in detail and bring council changes only in every other year, except the fee schedule could come forward if there were new fees on it. There just wouldn't be changes to the other fees. Staff goes through, every two to three years, staff goes through a detailed review on all of the service fees. That means that all of the departments who are providing those services for which there's an associated fee, they look at the staff time and resources that it takes for them on the average to provide that service. And that's how the fees get derived. So, it's based upon actual cost. The goal is cost recovery to a certain level. We do have many fees in the schedule that you can see in the ordinance have less than 100% cost recovery rates. Very common, very normal, especially like in the area of parks and recreation. So, we do have some fees that are not 100%. In fact, probably most are not covered at 100% recovery, but they do have a partial recovery. For those years that we don't do a scheduled detailed review, that's when staff would apply the CPI to the fees to determine what the increase in the fee would be. And then if it was, when it was low in that first year, we would roll that forward. We would not change any of the fees. And then the following year would include the prior year CPI plus the current year's CPI. And there would be a cumulative effect on applying the increases, and we would bring those numbers to council. Well, this year, as you can imagine, with inflation being what it was, the CPI was determined to be 13.85%, so it was no longer a nominal percentage. Staff just wanted to bring this to council to get direction because typically, we would not be bringing forth any changes. But we wanted to make sure that you had all the information. If we don't apply any of the 13.85% this year, then we carry that forward to the next year. And say we even have just a 6% CPI, then we could have almost a 20% increase next year. Now, that wouldn't be a 20% increase on all fees. There are categories of fees where council has provided direction, has adopted those lower cost recovery rates. So, some rates, even with the 13.85, if you went forward, if you gave directions that will, but don't change any of these fees, apply CPI to these other fees. So, these categories such as the planning review fees that they go through, parks and recreation, the airport. Those are probably the major ones, and we do have a lot of administrative fees. As you know, the list is quite, quite long. We do have fees in there that don't change according to CPI or the detailed review. They're changed as a result of rate studies or in the area of building fees. The building permit fees are based upon what's in the Uniform Building Code and what's adopted there. So, those are not impacted by this decision. But we wanted council to be aware of what the numbers were. In case you wanted to provide different direction, did you want to apply an increase to what would normally be applied to in this change? Or do you want to go ahead and stick with what we've been doing and not have any increases this year? And then just come back next year with the cumulative effect of the CPI increases? So, I think that kind of sums up what we're looking for from council. If you need any additional information from me, I'm more than happy to provide that.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Doyle.
So, when we talk about on our master fee schedule, it says reasonable cost to be recovered. So, if it says, sometimes it says 100%, sometimes it says market rates. So, the market rate ones are the ones where we do it based on CPI?
They are, are some of them, but it's usually a combination. The departments, we will provide the numbers to the departments as far as, okay, here is the CPI applied to your rates. This would be your new rate if we added the CPI, increased it by CPI. The staff within those departments would then take a look at their market area. Parks and Rec would call surrounding areas to turn, see what their fees are, and then we would set the market rates. We would adjust the fees or not adjust the fees according to what was in the market.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
All right. So, what Ms. Olson and the team is looking for from us is to have a discussion on what's palatable for us. So, the direction we currently have is that we would bring it back every other year. But with the rise in inflation, it could be a pretty significant request next year for what those fees might look like. And do we want to address that this year so that the impact to citizens isn't so large all at one time? And what that might look like. From my perspective, I would love to hear what my colleagues on the council have to say and your thoughts on it. But, you know, right now, families are really experiencing difficult times. Going to the grocery store, going to the gas station, I mean, things are expensive. And I don't really have a personal appetite to increase fees that impact our citizens. So, you know, non-negotiables for me would be keep the parking recreation fees alone. You know, keep any of the fees that our citizens are directly paying for as is. And we can circle back next year, see what the status of our budgetary outlook looks like, see what the CPI looks like, the cost of recovery analysis that Jill and her team do, and address it from that perspective. But I could be open, depending on the will of the council, on, you know, development costs. You know, things that are developing as we grow should pay for itself. And so, those costs should be passed on to those that are, that are growing or developing. But the other cost should not be bear directly by our citizens, in my opinion. So, with that, I'll open up for discussion and thoughts from members of the council. Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
So, and are we looking at the water rates and sewer rates to be adjusted to? Or are we going to handle that as a separate? So, we're, in our discussion right now, water rates are not even.
Not the service fees are not included in this.
Okay, great. I would, I mean, just from my general overall perspective, I agree. There's a cost of doing business, and I think it would be actually to come back in a year to, and do a huge jump for the development services, for the planning and zoning and building and all that stuff. I think we need to keep up with those services, but anything to do with. But anything to do with after-school programs, parks and rec, any of that stuff, I like to hold solid. Same with transportation. I'd like to hold transportation solid right there. Yeah, everything else where it seemed, seemed like a reasonable, just cost to doing business kind of deal.
Yeah, and as, you know, based on whatever direction we give this evening, that'll give the team the ability to go back, do the analysis, do the numbers. And then, of course, we would come back to council on any proposed fee increases. We could have then the specific discussions on what that might look like, based on what is given to us. If we were to elect to increase any fees at this time, there is a sixty-day posting period as far as what the effective date would be, so.
We can talk about.
Yeah, so we'll talk about it more specifics later. So really, today's more of that thirty thousand-feet level discussion on what direction we would like to.
And I'd also like to speak to some of the airport fees. I think those have been held low for a long time. I mean, if you look at the rate for a airport hangar is forty by thirty for four hundred and sixty dollars or something like that. I pay that for half the size for my boat storage, for my, you know what I mean? Like, so if these were actually held to market, they would be much higher. So I think we need to do some work out there to maybe entice some of our FBOs out there to, to build more hangers, because I know we've all kind of heard it, that hangers are needed at our airport in a big way.
Councilmember Lane?
Okay, I'll go. I have a little bit different perspective. We all hate going to the grocery store. If anybody was here at the last council meeting, you heard me say that. We go to the grocery store, we're spending way more money than we want to. One of the things that we've learned over the years when we did the positional analysis and everything else that we've done, is when we don't do things in incremental levels, and then we do great, big, giant jumps, the people really don't like that. They would rather have little bits here, a little bit here, and a little bit there, so they have time to get used to it. It is costing the city more money to do business today than it did a year ago. Plain and simple, just like everybody else, our costs are going up. So that means if we don't raise the fees so that the people are actually paying for the services that they're getting, somebody has to pay it. So that means somebody else is subsidizing what they're doing. So, or we cut somebody else's budget, so we don't have the money. We're subsidizing it somehow. So my thoughts are, we should raise the fees so that we are making those incremental adjustments every year. When we were, had a very small CPI, it was okay to go every two years. We don't have that right now, so I think it needs to be done every year, just so that we're not doing that big twenty-five, thirty percent jump next year. And over the course of the next twelve months, since we're not raising it, we're now subsidizing other people's costs. And I don't think we should be doing that, and I don't think that's what the people want either. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Dolan?
I kind of agree with the mix of everything, you know, I do agree with that. We need to be careful, or it's going to bite us in the future. You know, like I tell people, a lot of people don't always understand what we as city council do and what the city does, and you need to change this and do that. We have our areas that we do, and we provide, you know, water and sewer is one thing, but, you know, our rates are supposed to pay for that, and that's separate. But, you know, we provide roads, we provide parks, we provide EMS services, and that's supposed to be from the taxes we collect. So I think definitely I would, I'd still maybe want to protect, you know, some of those areas, parks and rec and things like that, where they are community services we are providing. You know, because we don't really want to hit our local citizens that are using these services hard with everything going on. But I just think we need to maybe go through it with that fine-tooth comb of how it'll affect. And like you said, if, you know, parks and rec and some of those areas where maybe we can see what it's like next year, and maybe we offset it budgeting-wise. And, but like I said, I do believe there's a lot of that in here that maybe doesn't apply to that, that maybe we, you know, and I guess that's the question without going page by page on the twenty-seven pages. I mean, there's a lot of things that we could probably update right now, based on the current CPI, and maybe kind of protect some of those areas. So that's kind of where I am on that, so.
Perfect. Councilmember Coke?
Yeah, I would, I would echo some of the, my colleagues' comments. Again, having done this for a number of years, Councilmember Lane is right. When we have to make a big adjustment after not making an adjustment for a really long time, it's way more painful. It's painful for the citizens, but it's also painful for us to decide when and where and how much to do that. And a lot of times, it ends up hurting way worse having to do it all at one time. So we definitely need to look at things. And again, I agree with the mayor as well as not wanting to do anything that would hurt the kids, especially when parents are having a hard time now. But I think we do need to look at some of these, these categories, and we're going to need to make changes where need be, because we, it's costing us more money. And so we need to make, take that into consideration. But I think there's a, there's going to be a fine line, and we're going to need to look those over very closely, as well as reminding everyone that if we don't make a change now, the change could be really big next time we look at these. And we just need to keep that on the forefront, that it, that that can happen. And we've been through that with the staff and now the wage analysis. We've been through it with water, sewer. I've been through this and seen what happens on the other side. It sounds good now to say, no, let's not raise anything, but then it really hurts when we actually have to come to do that. So just keeping that on the forefront.
Yeah, so what collectively I'm kind of hearing, and I'll summarize it to see if. Councilmember Campbell, do you have any, any thoughts?
I, I was, I had a, I do agree with what we're, what Councilwoman Coke also said and Councilwoman Lane has spoke of, that we all know prices are going up across the board. We as good stewards of everybody's money would like to be, give it all back to the children. I understand that. After talking with Councilwoman Lynn, she has some really positive direction in regards to private sector sponsorships for maybe schools and swims. And, and I would like for us to be able to maybe someday be able to put that on the agenda to have further discussion, maybe prior to this rate increase. So my direction would be to go ahead and do the raises per Jill's recommendations at this point, with more possible sponsorship sectors coming in to help the parks. And the reason why I say that is, as much as we want to help the parks and recreation, I also am a big advocate of Rotary Park. And as I walk through it lately, I see the deteriorating parking lots. I see the deteriorating sidewalks and the lifting routes and the things that are happening down there. And I don't want to sacrifice the safety of our community and the danger of our community by trying to save a couple of dollars here and there. But I would like to look into further what Councilwoman Lynn had said, which is looking at private sector sponsorships to helping with maybe park days, swim sessions, and other items moving forward. So if you understand the end of it, basically, at this time, I'd like to move forward with the increases per Jill, and then look at other ways we can help subsidize the Parks Department.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, this is going to come back to us, just like it did in the past. So I mean, if we, if we decide to just go all across the board, allow Jill to do this, and it comes back and it takes our after-school program up like fifty, we can say, we can delete that.
Correct.
So, you know, I say rip the Band-Aid off now and just every, go all the way across. I just think it's the best, because it is going to hit us later. We've known it, as being on here for eight years, as long as Councilmember Coke, I know, it's going to hurt. So I'd rather do this small increments. And as for what Councilmember Campbell was talking about, that's a whole different item that the city manager and I have talked about, and some, some things, and maybe helping out the community with pool fees and partnerships and stuff like that. So I think there's some room for us to still address that and be able to raise these costs. I don't want, I don't want to wait two years and then bring that up to families. I don't, I'd rather do it now.
Thank you. Alright, so what we need to do is give, give direction. So again, process-wise, I think the interpretation might have been only youth. There's, there's all citizens that use our parks and rec facilities. And so for, those would be fees across the board for them as well, when it comes to people that register their pets with, with the city. I mean, there's, there's fees for all these types of things. So basically, on, when I heard going around the dais, comments from councilmembers, it seemed that give direction to staff on the quality of life issues that we are non-negotiable. Let's not talk about those. So that would be, you know, the parks and rec programs, registering your animals. I mean, Justin and his team can go through and determine what those are. They'll bring all of the fee recommendations back to us. We would have, from a process perspective, they would make a presentation at a council meeting as an introduction. At a subsequent meeting, we would then adopt it. And those fees would have to have a sixty-day posting period for citizen feedback. So this is a long time process it's going to happen. But are you guys comfortable with that, that direction? So let's leave quality of life, or do you want to just look at all of them and, and address them across the board?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Dolan?
To be honest, I'm just flipping through these twenty-seven pages, and there are a few pages of parks and recs, and there's a section of the animal area. But other than that, there's a lot of, I'd almost like to see them all across the board. And then, like we said, we, then we can look, you know, if we're talking about thirty-three dollars versus thirty-four dollars, or, you know, then, then we can maybe look at them. But I, I do think, maybe, yeah, we do need to keep up. But like I said, then do it like we, and I think we, we stopped doing it every, yearly, because there was very little change. But, you know, this kind of defeats the whole purpose. Now there's big change, so I think we should go back to yearly. And then, but like I said, we can still go through and make adjustments as needed for those areas. But like I said, it's hard to know what we're talking about in these numbers without having them, so.
Sure, yeah, this is just thirty thousand feet. And I mean, just food for thought is, the only reason they're doing CPI is because that's the policy of the council. It doesn't, nowhere does it say that's what it costs to do that. So that's just the policy, policy of the council. So we're, we gave that direction, but we've already have a current budget that we're operating within. It has into account all of our positional analysis step increases, has the three percent cost of living that we did, and many of these services are provided within the confines of that budget, offset by, by fees. So again, that's just food for thought. We can have that discussion when it comes back forward with all of these fees. But again, it's a policy of the council that they come back with CPI. Doesn't, it's not taking into account the other side of the equation of, does it cost that much to do it? Or, or, and in many cases, it costs a lot more to do it. But, but there's the other side of that. So if the council's good with coming back with all of the items, and then we have the discussion at that time, knowing what the entire process is going to look like, then we can, we can give that direction. Just knowing that if you guys have non-negotiables, it takes a lot of staff resources to go through and do these calculations. And if, if we're not interested in seeing a certain area, I'd rather we speak up now versus having staff go through and do all of those analysis and come back, and we're like, oh, we never intended to talk about that in the first place. But it seems like from the nods I'm getting, you want to do the entire process. Alright.
Mayor, yes, I do.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Okay, alright, I think you have your direction. Mr. Knudsen, you're comfortable with the direction?
We are, thank you.
Alright, perfect. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Olson. Alright, we'll move on to item eight point three, which is award a job order for the Bridgewater Channel dredging Phase One to Lewis Equipment Services LLC, and approve multi-awards for job order cooperative purchase agreements for earthworks and channel maintenance utilizing Mojave County's job order contracts. Mr. Wolf?
Mayor and Council, that was quite a mouthful there. Let me catch up. And I have Mike. Sorry, I need to find it. Been doing this all day, so. Bridgewater, so it's a, this is for the Bridgewater Channel dredging project that was brought forward. We have a CIP for Bridgewater Channel dredging, but it's the whole channel. Earlier in the year, when we identified the CIP, there was a Phase One identified for a pinch point and a navigational hazard. But before you deny our two items, one is to approve a multi-job order contract. This is a contract of, that Mojave County has in place with contractors for working on earthwork and channel maintenance. The other item before you is the actual award of the work using that JOC methodology. The purpose of us looking at this was providing an expedient means of future contracting for earthworks and channel maintenance, something that gives us right contractors at hand in play. We provide, and then it's also going to provide for the immediate contracting for the dredging of the navigational hazard in the pinch point. This is an idea up in the top right. This is Mojave County's job order contract list. And I believe in the agenda itself, it lists these same firms that were awarded, five firms in that earthworks and channel maintenance category. Basically, they're as-needed contractors they have for that particular item. Working with procurement, procurement has devised this very similar to what Mojave County does, these two, Page One and Two, the actual task order proposal. We utilize that method to go ahead and solicit proposals. Our qualified proposal out of that list was with Lewis Equipment in that dollar amount of one hundred and fifty-seven, nine hundred and twenty dollars and five cents. You see the contract forms all made out, describing the work, providing for scope of work and, and drawings. Their bid is in writing there on the right. And then the project itself that we've got for this, if you're familiar with the south end of the channel, London Bridge to the right, down at the south end, we actually have this pinch point. And on the right shows basically the navigational hazard. And this was also identified by the police department. And they've been involved in the process of the design and the construction scheduling. They will have a boat in the water during the work. Also, as part of the work, we're required to haul the material out of that area and get it to an upland area. It cannot drain back into the water. So we've secured a small area on the city-owned and controlled parcel up there on the north end. We didn't want to drive any of this stuff over the bridge for purposes I'm sure you understand. The, there will be, as this haul goes on, dust control, and then there'll be cleanup and restoration as part of the project. In trying to move that project forward, we expedited, and were awarded a permit for Nationwide Permit Thirty-five to do the water and work, or do the in-water work. The, this gives the authority to the director to authorize the proceeding of the work, should you approve the award tonight. And then the schedule, we're on track all the way up to tonight's November eighth award for the project. We've actually got the permit secure now and in hand, as I reported. We anticipate the date to start construction, December fifth, being certainly right after the city's event there on the island for the parade of lights, I believe it. Yeah? And we have to be out of the water, all work complete by December thirty-first. But all work, including the restoration upland, would be by January fifteenth. The funding is the general fund, CIP, for the project. And if you have any questions, I'm available. Dustin Lewis with Lewis Equipment is also here tonight and is anxious to get started.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Wolf. On the dredge material, are there any smells from the dredge material as it dries out for where you're going to stage it after it's been pulled?
Oh, we will be de-watering it on that site. And then roller compacting it in place so it's controlled, we're not causing any other erosion or siltation elsewhere.
Will it be, will it smell?
I don't believe it will, there'll be enough of the under-channel dredging and materials that will mix with whatever bio-sediment that might be on the near shore, on the near bottom surface. That'll be mixed up with a large volume, about thirteen hundred cubic yards of material, so I don't believe we'll have any smell generating from the material.
So you're confident then with the dredge material, there's no nuisance should really be created for any of the neighbors in that area?
There might be a short term for the actual dredged area where we have a little bit of turbidity and we are mixing some of that material up and it's coming direct contact with the air at that point. There might even be a little bit from the truck haul, but we'll we'll monitor that and include that any washdown or restoration work needs to be done.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
So I've heard from a lot, from a question, from a few residents that that parts of the channel. Yes, there's a buildup at that choke point, but parts of the channel where we have mooring is actually eroding away where you can't even pull your boat up there and tie up because there's no beach left, so you're just kind of ramming your boat into a cement wall and dealing with the whatever happens after that. Was, do we look at being able to use some of that dirt and bringing it back up towards the channel, back up towards, you know, the the heat hotel and on that side, I know is real bad?
That's a great idea and it does, is worthy of analysis when we have the larger Bridgewater Channel work, which will survey and make recommendations for excavation and dredging. And and the shore shape itself, all the way from this pinch point, all the way north to the north end of the channel itself. That's currently under design, this piece phase one was pulled out as an immediate navigation hazard solution. And the overall shoreline shape and the dredging that where we will dredge and where we won't. And that amount of material will be determined here in the next month.
Okay, and and I too share the same concerns as Mayor, that if that smells and those neighbors won't like it. I I hope we have a backup plan to, you know, of how to mitigate it or at least make it, make it work for the residents there.
We'll look seriously at it, at that particular item.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Bonnie. Something occurred to me the other day, which was really off the wall and it was a reminder. I had several friends who have had swimmer's itch. And I didn't, I know it has, a lot of it has to do with the direct cause of the duck poop. And that was one of the reasons why you guys had, and the bird poop that you guys had made it illegal to feed the birds in that area. Anyway, you're going to be dredging up a bunch of duck poop and bird poop and other stuff like that. I was wondering if you guys had planned on putting signs out and warning swimmers about the swimmer's itch possibilities that may occur. And actually, I have no idea what other unwanted health hazards may occur. Do you plan on closing the beach area down during that time? And yes, people do swim in it, even in the winter time, I mean, I've seen people come up from, well, come down from northern states. You know, they like to swim.
Yeah, so thank you for for your comment, I I don't believe the signs were put up because of, it's not feed the birds to, because of duck poop. But it was because of the influx of of birds in in that area. We would, we meet all the environmental requirements as part of of this dredging process. And there will be safety barriers put up around the area that they'll be dredging.
I I just remember several of my friends who, the last time when Rotary was dredged, they had got issues.
Yeah, well, perfect, thank you for for your feedback. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve a multi-award cooperative job order contract purchase agreement utilizing Mojave County's JOC contracts for earthwork and channel maintenance to Desert Construction Lewis Equipment Services LLC, McCormick Construction Company, Percol Rock and Rumel Construction, Inc. And authorize the city manager to execute said JOC and cooperative purchase agreements and job order number one to Lewis Equipment Services LLC for the Bridgewater Channel dredging phase one in the amount of one hundred and fifty seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and five cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Coke. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, we're gonna backtrack just for a second, we are in our public hearing section of our meeting, item eight. And I forgot to ask for public comment on item eight point two, so when we were discussing and getting possible or provide direction for the process of updating the city's schedule of fees and services. As contained in our Lake Havasu City Code Section three point two zero point zero four zero, I forgot to open the public hearing, so I'm gonna do that now. But would anyone like to address the city council on our discussion that we had regarding the fees? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and resume our regular agenda. So we'll go down to item eight point four, which is award and agreement for professional services for the milling and overlay of City Core Streets Project to Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a presentation for the City Core Streets Paving Award and Design of the Bid Documents during. And and I've got this overview here, basically tonight is to award the design contract preparation for what you see outlined there in yellow, that array of streets, McCullough, Swanson, Smoke Tree, Riviera. We've pulled together as a core project, all in one larger contract. It also includes some water main utilization of the streets paving funds. The background of this hot mix paving program, this is really a two-piece presentation, one is the program that identified the streets and the other one is the streets, what we're gonna do with them for paving. So the top ten, twelve streets were identified based on a priority array program. And then assigned points, individual segments and areas of streets were combined to create a this city core project. And with a larger contract and one contractor. With that array of streets in that general area, we didn't feel it was smart to have more than one contractor handling the work in that area. The mill and fill method of hot mix application has been considered mostly economical spread of our paving funds. Get the biggest bang for the buck and during the process, we've got water mains that been evaluated and included in some of the replacement program. These are the five on a national level, these are the five recognized criteria for rating the streets. Everything from street classification, what time or type are they classified here in the city? How much traffic, what is the actual pavement condition, which everyone should know, we rate that yearly. There's a section of the city, we rate yearly for a new pavement condition index. And then geographical areas, another category of points that are awarded, basically the zone, industrial, commercial, residential zones. And then what is the current cost to preserve? We cannot continue to chip seal every year and call it good. This is an outline, immediate, actually, this is eleven, but this is how the streets were identified and lumped together as projects. The top four lines are the city core project. Where you look across our working spreadsheet, it gives us an idea what the rough order magnitude of cost is. It shows the priority points of how much that street or segment scored on the average. Those are poor conditions, the higher the points, the poorer the condition. We've got the rough order magnitude cost listed here and then we've tried to spread it out, so we don't, not trying to do fifteen million dollars with work all in one year. This is the type of way we're looking at spreading that pavement fund, is the mill and fill similar to what you've seen on McCullough in the past? The rest of McCullough, for example, is part of that city core project, doing the very same idea here for mill and fill. And then we do have the water main replacement, give you an idea, we're we're replacing several thousand feet of water main as part of the program, so we're not putting hot mix over water mains that may not be holding together very long, but the current projects for street paving program, we have some already in play. That top section in red, under the twenty twenty two water main on Lake Havasu Avenue includes a hot mix for the entire street. That length from Kiowa to Tacoma. And then also included and actually brought to the city manager's desk at that level for contracting was the industrial streets I've highlighted there in green. Those are under design, under small projects right now for this spring, to actually get hot mix started this spring on it. And with the leftover remaining streets and segments, we've got the twenty twenty four, we pushed that out to twenty four program. In case we have CIP funds directed, prop, directed towards the program. We, you can see we're doing London Bridge Road, parts of Lake Havasu Avenue and then Mesquite all the way up to Tacoma. This is an outline of all the program for what we've proposed here, that map showing all the streets in one with the criteria. The action tonight is award for the design for bid documents to Kimley Horn and Associates for a hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred and thirty five dollars for the city core paving project. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Yeah, so as a reminder, in this budget year, we've invested ten million dollars in new road projects and this action tonight will do the design contract for for that work to be done. So it's a great investment that the city will be making in in some of our road infrastructure. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wolf? Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I have a question for you, that ten million dollars, can you tell us again where that's coming from?
Yeah.
Is that out of our general fund?
Yeah, that's a general fund dollars that we allocated from our budget.
Okay.
Yeah, there's still an additional approximately two million dollars in our general road maintenance program that will occur as well, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
And just to clarify, the the award design is for all those areas, right? Or it's only, we're only gonna do this, we're starting with the city core, but the design is for all of those or is it just for the city core?
No, the design award tonight request is just for the city core streets, the ones highlighted in yellow. We are letting, that's a larger design contract, but we do have con, design contracts already in place for the green colored streets, the industrial streets for this spring's paving. Those design contracts are already underway and rather than commit to design contracts for the blue highlighted areas. We're showing that in the upcoming fiscal year twenty four paving program. So we've given the council the opportunity to keep the pri, keep the program going.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moses?
So.
Yeah, well, we'll do Councilmember Moses, Councilmember Campbell, and then we'll we'll go to you.
Thank you.
That's fine.
These are obviously main arteries heavily, heavily used. And so it seems like our grading system skews towards that, because are there other city, are there other parts of the city or other roads in the city that might need, that are actually way worse off, but they're just not grading as high because they're not as used as much?
So to answer that properly, we we want to first make sure that, you know, everybody's street is a, can be a priority, you know, my street kind of thing, we wanted to make sure and address other streets that are failing, we keep records of the pavement condition index. And they, there are other streets that are in the failing category without a doubt. And we have our handful of those. The the rating system utilized though, it also accounts for how much traffic is using that poor road. Or is it in a most traveled mileage, do we have the most people using it? Is it, for example, downtown core rated very high because of the zone, the geographical zone it was in and the ADT? I've got to tell you, the average daily traffic for the city core streets are high. And that they they grab points out of that rating system right away.
So do we have a plan for those failing roads that aren't necessarily main arteries?
We have them listed right now. And I think our plan in place was to continue to implement this priority array and score points. And try to sign the streets that are still grabbing those points. Other than complete failure, that is something that we can look at a little more deeply perhaps before we do even the twenty four program, but need more money.
Yeah, and then if I may, one more question, and this might be for Jess or for you. But we're also gonna be repaving ninety five, hopefully sometime, you know what I mean? I could only imagine sort of Lake Havasu Avenue and the highway is closed at the same time. Like, have we put any thought towards making sure that we're not overlapping as best we can? Because if downtown is shut down and the highway is shut down, I mean, talk about, I mean, if we do a street closure for a parade that causes night bears down. So could you imagine if the highway and downtown is shut down?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Moses, first off, correction, we're not touching ninety five.
Right.
And that's, that's Eight Out's road, that's Eight Out's money, thanks to Representative Liya Biasucci on for that project and and solidify, solidifying that. And by the way, I heard this week that they're gonna be going out for bid, now it's December, the RFP will be on the street, that Eight Out's putting that on the street. All that being said, yeah, there's there's a special events, there's a road construction, there's utility breaks and and maintenance that that occur. And all those projects are coordinated with with public safety, with utilities, with with roads, with Anthony's office in terms of special events and and across the board. So we want to make a special consideration and get that word out early and often to let people know what, that there will be, you know, issues in terms of, with construction. People like to see the end result, but how the sausage is made is, I can, can disrupt.
I just, is there gonna be coordination between our two projects?
Our two projects and so much more, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, I was reading through the project, the city core paving projects, the the ones downtown. And it didn't look like the lower Smoke Tree was going to be addressed. But then when I was looking at your map, and mind you, I'm looking at a phone through a Zoom and it looks kind of pixelled to me and I didn't have that presentation in front of me. Are we going to be milling and filling the lower part of Smoke Tree from like Magnolia to Lake Havasu Avenue? Is that on your scope of work?
That's actually on a separate streets maintenance project for I believe it's Slurry. For the lower part of Smoke Tree, that's being handled through the streets and streets maintenance, that lower section. We pulled it, we pulled that lower section out and are only doing the upper section there for mill and fill.
Okay, well, I I have a pretty good idea why they pulled that out and it probably has to do with identifying the improperly laid sidewalks on Smoke Tree from Old Berry to Lake Havasu Avenue. Where there it's a rolled curb and then we laid on top of it and it's completely dangerous. So before we and it's completely dangerous. So before we start milling and filling on that lower portion, I, I believe, I've already spoke with staff about it, they're very aware of it. So I just, when I was looking at both, the information I have in front of me plus your presentation, it looked like you were addressing it. But that's something that's going to be pulled out and maybe we can look at the whole project as a whole.
I might add.
But better down the road. Yes?
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt. I, I might add that there is something ongoing right now for the manholes on down from Swanson down Smoke Tree to get those manholes taken care of that are a little too high.
Yeah, they're a little bit too high. So yeah, personally myself, I've been a big advocate of this street since before I ran. Instead of just considering a slurry, I can, I agree that the manholes need to be dropped right now, but then we need to look at that whole street as a whole. And everybody, you're, everybody needs to take a look at those sidewalks that are completely dangerous to our citizens. Because I just don't want to see a mill and fill or slurry on that street and then later say, wow, why didn't we ever address those bad sidewalks that were installed decades ago, way before any of us were in the game for sure. So and for all the council members, if you drive down a Smoke Tree, take a look at a rolled curb and then how they laid the sidewalk on top of it, which is completely dangerous for all the foot traffic that we get from the lower part of Smoke Tree all the way up to town. I've walked it a hundred times, but I know it's been the laughing stock of all the contractor, concrete contractors for decades. So just a little education there. And the rest of the projects, I'm beyond excited about. I cannot wait to see us spend more and more money on our roads and infrastructure in this community, for sure.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Once I get there. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Right, Councilmember Lane?
I move to award the agreement for professional services for the City Core Paving Project to Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item eight point five is approved cooperative purchase of one Caterpillar four twenty dash oh seven backhoe loader, four by four e-stick plumbed from Empire Southwest LLC, DBA Empire Machinery for vehicle equipment replacement for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Frosley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sorry for the surprise. Mr. Young got on a plane to Tennessee this morning to watch the Denver Broncos play football on Sunday.
Poor guy.
Yeah. So, Mayor and Council, this first item I have for you, on Bill's behalf, is the purchase of a backhoe. This is a unit for our wastewater division. The unit that it's replacing was originally purchased in two thousand and four, making this one eighteen years old. It is well beyond its recommended replacement points of thirty-two, it's at forty-six currently and it spends a lot of time in our shop. So this is in our current approved budget. So we have money already approved for this purchase. And one other thing Bill wanted me to let you know is, last year we purchased a similar unit for our water division. And these units come with an attachment, a jackhammer attachment. They cost about twenty thousand dollars. Because water seldom uses it and wastewater seldom uses it, we eliminated that attachment for this purchase, lowering the cost by twenty thousand dollars plus or minus. And water and wastewater are going to share that additional attachment. So that is my entire presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Frosley. Are there any questions, comments from members of the council?
I have one.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Is this another one where it's a year to two years out to get?
Well, not two years, but everything we're seeing is approximately eight to eleven months out, yes. So we'd like to get this ordered tomorrow if possible.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, I move to approve a cooperative purchase of one backhoe with the authorized Caterpillar dealer, Empire Southwest LLC, DBA Empire Machinery, in an amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. In our last public hearing for the evening's item eight point six, award bid for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three crack seal program to Holbrook Asphalt Company. Mr. Frosley?
Thank you once again, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council. As you just indicated, this is an annual contract we do as part of our pavement and maintenance program. This particular contract tonight is for our crack seal program. So it's a construction contract for crack seal. As per the earlier discussion, you can see that the prices this year over last year are approximately fourteen percent higher, which is actually a little bit lower than, than what we've been seeing. We had three bids. They're all within nineteen and twenty-five percent of the low bid. So we don't have any concerns with, with the low bid as submitted by Holbrook. So we are asking for an approval for this construction contract this evening.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Frosley?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I just have a quick question. On the, on the pathway, so that's that multi-youth path that follows the highway? Is one of the, on the very last page, parking lots and paths, we're growing data to North Palverdi?
We've got a work identified on that path that we contract with, with ADOT to maintain as well as the island walking path.
Nice. Okay. I, I walk it. So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
A question, is that the same people that did it last year or was that Chola?
Boy, between fog seal, slurry seal, chip seal and crack seal, it's hard for me to keep them placed. But I know Choya did have one of those programs. I'm sorry, I can't identify for you tonight if it was actually the crack seal program.
Okay, I'm kind of in the same boat you are. I can't remember. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I move to award the bid for a fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three crack seal program to Holbrook Asphalt Company, in the amount of two hundred thirty-three thousand and three hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item nine on our agenda is current events. Are there any council committee All right, item ten is our future meetings. Our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two at six PM. That'll be a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six PM, we will also have a regular meeting. Item eleven, are there any future discussion items? Item twelve, entertain a motion to adjourn?
motion.
All right, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind and we'll see you next time.
Thank you for holding down the fort.